The regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council for Monday, August 18, 2025. And I'd ask that if you would rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tammer, please call the roll.
Toledo?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Virgil?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Hill?
Present.
Bram?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. We'll go on to item two, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone in the audience that has a written communication that he or she would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, and Clerk Tammer, were there some written communications we had received?
There are, Mayor. There's seven of them. They're posted on a board docs.
Very good. Thank you. Item three is public forum. Clerk Tammer, has anyone signed in for public forum?
Yes, Mayor. We have Armalene Moretti.
All right. For all those who are doing public forum, speak from the back microphone. Please state your name. Address is optional, just to help us get back to you if need be. You have three minutes to speak on any topic you would like, Ms. Moretti. And you can adjust the microphone as you need.
My name is Armalene Moretti. I live at 243 North Highview in Elmhurst. And in support of the micro-mobility ordinance conversations, I would like to speak with you today about bike safety. Cyclists trained in bike safety or who have ridden a bicycle on our roadways for a long time do things that may appear reckless, but actually help us be seen and safe while riding. Before an ordinance is finalized and passed, I'm asking each of our alderpersons and our mayor to review the Smart Cycling Guide, which I have purchased, one for each of you. And the guide provides an overview on how cyclists should ride on the roads to obey the law and be safe. After reviewing the booklet, I would like you to go online to the bikesafetyquiz.com and complete the quiz as a cyclist. This quiz will test your knowledge on bike safety and, more importantly, educate you on how cyclists should ride their bikes to be safe on the roadways. After taking the quiz, you may be surprised to learn that some behavior some may think is reckless may actually be things we must do to stay alive while riding our bikes. The quiz is free, and I'm including a postcard with each booklet that has a name on the quiz for you. If you have any questions regarding the bike safety, please let me know.
All right. You can deliver them to Clerk Tammer, to the chief, either one. He's in your neighborhood. Thank you, Ms. Moretti. Clerk Tammer?
Antonio de Blasio.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Antonio de Blasio. I live at 540 West Fay Avenue in Elmhurst. I'm a graduate of Immaculate Conception High School, and I've generally resided in the area since I can remember back in 1983 or so. My wife and I, as I said, we live on Fay Avenue. And one of the items on the agenda tonight is the IDOT joint funding agreement for the construction of the pedestrian bridge over Route 83 that would then go through a forest preserve area on Fay Avenue and connect with a proposed side path that would run along Fay Avenue. But it runs right in the front of eight to 10 homes, directly in front of our houses. I'm generally, my wife and I are generally opposed to the pedestrian bridge, but more importantly is the side path that is proposed to connect from the bridge and run along Fay Avenue across all of our properties. I love to ride my bicycle. We go all over the city of Elmhurst. We use the prairie paths and go out west to Geneva, everything. If you put a side path in front of our homes, people will get hurt. It's extremely dangerous. I pull in and out of my driveway every day, as does my stepdaughter, her boyfriend, my wife. There are trees along the sides of the properties. It's already difficult to see pedestrians that come across our property. And now you're proposing to build an eight-foot-wide side path that will not only have pedestrians, but will have bicyclists at all types of speeds zipping past our homes and our driveways, and it just poses an extreme amount of danger. The side path is not needed. My dad told me a long time ago, there's a big difference between what you want and what you need. The city of Elmhurst does not need a side path to run in front of people's homes. There's an existing sidewalk there. There are six or seven new homes that are being built along Fay Avenue that will have a sidewalk in front of them. They can connect to the pedestrian bridge and walk along the side path. You also don't need a bicycle path to run right in front of people's homes. I, along with anybody else, can ride their bicycles on Fay Avenue. And if, when they get to the new pedestrian bridge, if they want to connect to it from the street, they can do that. You don't need to combine the two. It's extremely dangerous to do so. We met with the consultant at the open forum that you were gracious enough to have a couple of months ago, and I asked the consultant, are there any other side paths in the city of Elmhurst that run directly in front of somebody's home? He didn't know the answer, okay? And I haven't heard from him since because there are none. It doesn't make sense to do it. Fay Avenue slopes downward as you go west, and if you're on your bike, you're traveling at tremendous speed. We don't need that directly in front of people's homes. As you come east from the forest preserve towards West Avenue, the side path will dump directly onto West Avenue, which is an extremely busy street.
Mr. de Blasio, you're almost at four minutes, so if you could hit the high points and wrap up.
I have 20 seconds, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It empties directly onto West Avenue where there's a tremendous amount of traffic. It just doesn't make sense to do it. And then lastly, aesthetically, I don't want a runway in front of my house with a yellow stripe going down the middle of it. I don't think anybody in this room would want that in front of their house. Ours is worth maybe a million, a million-one, a million-two. I don't want a runway in front of my house. So respectfully, I would ask the city council to think of different ways to spend the 1.3 million that you're being asked to contribute to this project and dedicate that to other needs that the city has. Needs versus wants. Thank you very much for the additional time. Thank you.
We have Frank Canizaro.
Hello, everyone. My name's Frank Canizaro. I'm at 556 West Fay here in Elmhurst, been an Elmhurst resident 30 years or so.
Mr. Canizaro, can you come a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, sure. Sure. I just was gonna pony off of what Tony was saying. At the original meeting we had, and everything I've read about the pedestrian overpass is the primary concern is safety. And so we're talking about safety of getting people safely across 83, a safe way to do it. And there was comparisons to that with the prairie path. And at the meeting, they talked about, well, you know, this is how the prairie path is, and they're comparing the prairie path to what would now be this bicycle path that runs through my driveway. And that's apples and oranges. You know, the prairie path goes on and on and on. This is a path that's directed through homes and dead ends in a neighborhood. And so if it is about safety, and I agree with that, I have no problem with that, then we have to maybe think about the safety of the people on the path, the kids that go to school, because Emerson is right there. And so you have kids walking up and down that sidewalk going to school. You've got older people, people with their dogs. So to share the sidewalk with bicycles, I know it's a big issue, these e-bikes and scooters. They go pretty fast. And when I'm in the park in Barron's, somebody comes flying by, it's a little scary. I don't want that in my house. And the biggest thing to me is, might be a level of considering moving because I don't want to be the one who backs out of my driveway and hits someone. Because I don't think it's, you know, if it's gonna happen, it's just when it's gonna happen. Bikes go really fast, the scooters go fast, the extra activity, it's 30 feet from my garage door, and they're gonna widen it, let alone the look and possible real estate changes because of it. But safety is the primary concern. And you have people coming in and out of our driveways all the time, soon to be six more houses, so 14 houses, you're gonna run a path with potentially people going pretty quick on a bike. So if we're about safety, we can maybe find another way to make it a little safer for who's gonna use the path and for the people pulling in and out of their driveways. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all that's signed in, Mayor.
All right. That is the end of the list of those who have signed up to make public comment this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment but did not have the opportunity to sign in? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will then close public forum. Thank you. Item four, announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Virgil?
I have a couple of things related to Ward Five. This Thursday, August 21st, we have a police neighborhood roll call at the corner of Sunnyside and Olive at 7:00 PM. If there's rain on that date, the rain date is gonna be the next day at the same time, same place. Also, I wanted to let folks know that we're planning to have a Ward Five Town Hall on Tuesday, September 9th. This will be at 7:00 PM at the large meeting room on the first floor of the Elmhurst Library. Thank you.
Alderman Virgil, Alderman Hill?
Thank you. I just wanted to announce, I know this has been on social media here and there, but on Saturday, August 24th, we're going to have the Street Eats and Beats Food Truck Festival hosted by the Lake York Business Association. Again, that's gonna be from 2:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, August 24th, at 410 Lake Street. The hotel there has graciously decided to host us and allow a day of food, entertainment, and family fun, and also a celebration of the new association for the north side and the businesses of the north side. And who knows, maybe if you come there around 2:30, you might see a band or two play that might even host some artists that are up and coming in Elmhurst but are definitely not compensated for their playing. But would love to entertain you, and I might even join them up there. So hope to see you on the 24th, 2:00 to 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hill, other announcements? Alderman Baker?
I have two quick ones tomorrow night in the fourth ward. At Joanne Way and Berto is the police roll call at 7:00 PM. So hopefully, our residents can make that. And then secondly, another request for volunteers for the upcoming Beer Fest on September 13th. If you haven't gotten a message from Kathy Jordan, I'm sure you will, but please respond to that favorably. Think it'll be a good time for everyone. Tickets are on sale for the general public at discounted rates at elmhurstcraftbeerfest.com. So I'm doing real well with it.
And did you want to say when the Beer Fest was?
September 13th.
You did. All right. Very good. Thank you. Others? Okay. I will move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tammer, please read the consent agenda.
5.1, minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on July 21st, 2025. 5.2, accounts payable August 18th, 2025, $7,972,143.45. 5.3, appointment of Kristi Solberg to fulfill the unexpired term of Angela Ferrantino as a Veterans Commission member. 5.4, appointment of Justin Ruskis to fulfill the unexpired term of Bill Garner as a Veterans Commission member. 5.5, appointment of Jackson Kemper to the Commission on Youth for the term 8/18/2025 through April 30th, 2028. 5.6, referral committee and commission meeting recordings. 5.7, report Evergreen Avenue parking restrictions. 5.8, report Elmhurst University temporary liquor license request, homecoming events. 5.9, report Spring Road Business Association Elmtoberfest request. 5.10, report IDOT joint funding agreement for construction Route 83 pedestrian bridge. 5.11, report intergovernmental agreement Cricket Creek Land Convenance for the Route 83 pedestrian bridge project. 5.12, report Route 83 pedestrian bridge construction engineering services agreement. 5.13, report easement agreement Route 83 pedestrian bridge project. 5.14, an ordinance granting a variation for the property commonly known as 295 to 305 North York Street. 5.15, an ordinance rezoning and granting a conditional use permit for the property commonly known as 1033 and 1037 South Illinois Route 83. 5.16, an ordinance imposing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and municipal grocery service occupation tax for the city of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.17, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement buying between the Knights of Columbus and the city of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.18, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement buying between the Jackson Elementary School Parent Teacher Association, the city of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 5.19, a resolution accepting the 2024 annual comprehensive financial report prepared by Sycage CPA LLC for the city of Elmhurst. 5.20, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 30 replacement police department mobile data terminals. 5.21, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Rock Salt for Use within the city of Elmhurst. 5.22, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a local public agency agreement for federal participation buying between the city of Elmhurst and the Illinois Department of Transportation in connection with the Palmer Drive Resurfacing Project. 5.23, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number three for the South and West Tower Rehabilitation Project. 5.24, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional design and engineering services agreement buying between Clark Deeds, Inc. and the city of Elmhurst for the 2026 water main improvements project. 5.25, a resolution to authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and the city of Elmhurst for the First Street Landscaping Project. And 5.26, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the local public agency engineering services agreement for the Palmer Drive Resurfacing Project.
Thank you, Clerk Tammer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either for further discussion or to vote against? Alderman Bram?
5, excuse me, 5.12.
Any others? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 5.12? Alderman Nardini with the motion. Alderman Virgil with the second. Clerk Tammer, please call the roll.
Toledo?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Virgil?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. No absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. The consent agenda minus 5.12 passes. Please read the report on 5.12.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Building Committee that the construction engineering services agreement from Civil Tech for the Route 83 pedestrian bridge project in the amount not to exceed $382,346 be accepted and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary city council documents for approval. Signed, Alderman Emily Bastido, Chair. Alderman Mike Baker and Alderman Rex Erby. Unsigned, Alderman Michael J. Bram, Vice Chair.
I may have a motion to put 5.12 before the council for passage. Alderman Bastido with the second. Alderman Bram.
Who was the second?
Alderman Bram.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bram. Alderman Bastido?
Thank you, Mayor. So this project has been around a while, so I think everyone's probably familiar with it. But it is a pedestrian bridge over 83. There are four items on our agenda tonight regarding this project. It's about two-thirds funded with grants. It comes at the request of residents and aldermen to create a safer path over 83. Right now, some of the options for residents on the north side include Grand and Lake. This is a much safer option. There was an open house, and actually, staff made several changes to the plan as a result of the open house and some of the comments from the residents. So 5.12 specifically deals with the construction engineering services agreement, which is a result of an RFQ. Civil Tech was deemed the most qualified based on scoring because of their statement of qualification, their experience with similar projects that involve IDOT documentation related to grant funding, because there's a lot more work that is involved when grant funding is part of a project. So I ask for everyone's support.
And this is then for the engineering services, not for the construction?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion on the floor. Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Bastido, for your summary of the project. My comments are not specifically for this agenda item 5.12, but more broadly for all four or the project as a whole. This shouldn't be a surprise to pretty much most, if not all of you. I've had concerns over this project from day one, voiced them during budget discussions, committee discussions, et cetera. I think the project overall is a good project. It's a benefit. It's a benefit to not only Elmhurst residents but outside of Elmhurst as well. The problem is, is that to me, this is still a nice-to-have. It's not a need-to-have. And with all our capital expenditures that we still need to conquer, if we had unlimited funds, I probably wouldn't even be speaking here tonight. But I'm keeping with the theme that I've talked about in previous budget discussions and previous discussions overall, that, you know, when this project was first brought before us, it was roughly, Capital Improvement Fund was gonna contribute $736,400. And I know as we, as they say, fine-tune our pencil or sharpen our pencil, things change. You do Phase One, you do Phase Two, costs can increase. And this is an example of that. Now, possibly Elmhurst dollars, Capital Improvement Fund, Elmhurst residents' dollars, it's estimated at close to $1.4 million out of Elmhurst residents' pockets. There's a lot of needs here in town. And yes, there's different funding sources, but I can't say and criticize in regards to what our other needs are and requesting other needs, capital needs to be met. And then, again, in my perspective, ask the Elmhurst residents to pay for something that has doubled or close to doubled in the years that, since this has been presented, in Elmhurst dollars. So I do not support this, not because of the construction engineering services agreement, but the overall project as a whole. Thank you.
Alderman Bram, additional discussion? Someone's calling in to discussion. Anyone else? All right. Clerk Tammer, call the roll.
Toledo?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Virgil?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Jensen?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, zero absent.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, 5.12 passes. Onto item six, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials, Mayor Levin. I have, actually, I had the Beer Fest on there, so we'll skip over that. I did want to say that I and a number of DuPage County elected officials and public safety officials, including our fire and police chief, attended the ribbon cutting for the Crisis Recovery Center for DuPage County, which is located in the county complex. It's a brand-new building. It's a probably ribbon cutting, but cutting-edge in terms of what the services are that this center will offer. The 988 number is the national number that someone having a mental crisis can call. The problem we've dealt with in the past is that if someone is having some sort of mental crisis or substance abuse crisis, you dial 911. It implicates our police and fire. They take the person in crisis to the hospital. It really is a waste of resources for the emergency room where they may be waiting. They may not have the correct medical professionals on hand. This new resource center, which I toured, has separate sections for youth, for adult, for substance abuse, and general mental health issues. There are people on board to do a triage and assessment. There's up to 24 hours of crisis observation. If it's something like substance abuse, there may be up to seven days of residency there. And then people will be referred appropriately, so they're not just come in, you see them, you've calmed down, but they're going to make the appropriate referrals. So this is something we're all can take advantage of. And I think, you know, if our police, the people can refer, it can be other medical providers, it can be police or fire, or it could just be that someone in your family or you yourself are having a crisis, and you can go there. No appointment, you walk in the door, and you will be received. It's a much better option than calling 911 if it's not really that kind of emergency. So another number to remember, 988. And we'll leave it at that. Q for a Cause is Labor Day weekend. That's a big event for those of us that don't have summer homes, so come out for that. And I think that's all I have on this part of the agenda. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things before we get to, well, did you want to talk about?
Let me go through the referral report first. All right. All right. Well, I'll go on. So you each saw, we published our referral report for the various committees. Nothing that requires action, but I just want to make sure you saw it and see if there are any questions about it. Okay, very good. Alderman Erby?
Thank you, Mayor and City Manager, for providing that. So I appreciate that greatly, and I hope that continues on a quarterly basis. And I find it a great tool to keep us in sync. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item is the semi-qucentennial working group. I have a memo that I sent out. We will be forming a group together to plan appropriately for our semi-qucentennial, I like to say that, our 250th year anniversary of our country. So if there are people who are interested in volunteering, are they to direct that to?
We'll be putting information on the website, and people can apply to be a part of that.
All right. So not, almost getting a little late to start planning for that, but that information is out there. I think that's now while I have. City manager?
Thank you. So a few items as Director Coyle gets the screens ready for the capital expenditure budget presentation. This Friday, the Lions Club is holding their reverse raffle at the Knights of Columbus Hall. That is Friday, August 22nd. Doors open at 6:30 with the first ticket being drawn at 7:00. That includes dinner. For a mere $50, you are benefiting the community and having a fun time as well. So please contact me or Community Bank of Elmhurst if you want tickets for that. Second item is next Monday, here in City Council Room, we will hold the Neighborhood Traffic Study Number Six Open House. That is from 4:30 to 6:30. Again, that's Neighborhood Traffic Study Number Six, Open House, 4:30 to 6:30 here in the City Council Room. And then finally, next Wednesday, we will be holding a blood drive in this room as well, and that is from 9:30 to 1:30. Walk-ins are welcome. You're always encouraged to make an appointment through Vitalent or Vitalent, however you pronounce that name. But please come and donate. It's a renewable resource. I'm not good at asking people to donate money, but I'm really good at asking people to donate blood. So please come and do that because it really benefits multiple people.
I'm gonna talk about what Area 6 is. If I had an app right in front of me. Okay. All right. City manager is gonna add a little bit, but we're gonna get ready for our capital expenditure budget.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. So here we are at the beginning of the budget season. I know it seems to sneak up on us earlier every time. I think everybody here has been through this process, or at least viewed it from the audience.
And while we don't go into great detail about every item on there, I will highlight some of the projects and the process that we use, and then talk about the next steps at the end. So to begin, the object, the objective, excuse me, of the capital expenditure budget of the CEB is to identify and create a comprehensive plan for the long-range major capital expenditures which we have in the city. Those expenditures are defined as $25,000 or more that result in the acquisition or construction of a fixed asset, which we hold for a period of 10 years or more. As you can imagine or know, we have quite a few capital expenditures, and so we try to classify them and prioritize them. And so those lists are on the screen. I won't detail each one, but they haven't, they've changed a little bit from year to year as we have redefined what fits into the capital expenditure budget. The next slide shows the expenditures by priority each year. And so each year, staff gets together, we look at what we have in the list, what we have accomplished in the list and can remove, and then what we need to add to the list. And again, the purpose is for budgeting so that we know five years out what is coming and where we can maybe move projects around, either to help balance the expenditures. Sometimes opportunities present themselves where we move a project up, and sometimes challenges present themselves where we have to move a project further out in the CEB. The next slide shows the total expenditures in a pie chart. As you can see, the general fund is the greatest amount at $118 million. And then we further break that down by different areas, by public safety, information technology, public works, streets, public works benefits. The next highest expenditure is in the municipal utility fund at $78 million. And then we have TIF expenditures at $55 million and a few others. Some of those are day-to-day kind of operational things like the vehicles or stormwater, parking. But again, they provide a capital asset that is necessary as we go on a day-to-day basis. Next slide shows revenue sources by fund. As you can see, the GO bonds and I E P A loans are, make up the biggest piece of the pie. Not uncommon in municipal government because you take out a GO bond over the course of, say, 20 years so that people who are getting the benefit of that capital expenditure, that project, are paying for it over that amount of time. The second biggest piece is the municipal utility fund, which is funded by water and sewer rates. Deals with all of our underground work, our wastewater treatment plant, our water pumps, just a tremendous amount of infrastructure. And then each of the others has a slice. I do like to point out, though, that under federal-state grants, we were in the queue for almost $50 million in federal and state grants for projects that we have in the queue. Next slide gets in, starts highlights of the 2026 five-year CEB. So this year, the CEB actually decreased to $309 million. Again, that's for five years, from $347.9 million the prior year. And the primary driver of that was the decrease in the progression of Bundle 5 and 6 at the water reclamation facility. We've made lots of progress on Bundle 5, so that's coming out of the CEB. Other notable highlights in the CEB include street resurfacing, reconstruction projects, and the addition of the sidewalk master plan, which we approved a year ago.
Chair.
Yes. Thanks, City Manager. The change from 349 to, or 347 to 309, all I see on these is this year's, so I don't have the 347 number, I just have this year's 309. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. The next slide highlights the top 10 projects by value within the CEB. This is something that the Public Works Committee has taken back and reviewed in the past. I talked to the Chair tonight, and there will be some capacity of discussion at the Public Works Committee in the future. And so, Mayor, if I may, I recommend that council get any questions to Director Belicky or myself regarding that, if you can't attend the Public Works Committee where this is discussed, or attend it if you have that opportunity.
Very good.
The next page gets into the municipal utility fund, wastewater reclamation facility. I always like to highlight this is the biggest asset that the city owns. We've been going through a number of upgrades over the last few years. Bundle 5 has the clarifier project. That and Bundle 6, the next step, are necessary for the plant so that we can treat phosphorus as required by the federal EPA and the state EPA. So this is not only a rebuilding of the infrastructure that was there, but it's also getting it ready for the phosphorus removal. We did receive notice that the phosphorus requirement has been pushed out from 2031 to 2038, which is going to help us tremendously because with the 2031 deadline, we were going to incur a lot of debt with the EPA loans that we can now kind of push back, and it'll be a relief on rates into the future. Other municipal utility fund projects are the water, I'm sorry.
Alderman Nardini.
Thanks so much. I was kind of picking my spots. I didn't know if I was worth the interruption. Bundle 6, more for people watching at home than for us. Bundle 6 is not just Elmhurst, that's not just Illinois, that's a national obligation. The money that we're going to be asking Elmhurst taxpayers to spend for this, or that we are going to be budgeting, is because we're obliged by the federal government.
That's correct.
And the push out, it was 2030, and it's now 2038.
Correct. It was 2031.
2031.
And now it's 2038. Correct.
Thank you.
So other municipal utility fund projects include, in the water division, $39.5 million of water main replacement, pump station upgrades, and reservoir improvements. And on the sewer side, not including the wastewater treatment plant, is sewer, sewer main replacement, sewer main lining, pump improvements, lift station repairs, and other piping in the amount of $19.1 million. Next in the CEB is the street and alley program. This is an annual program that we do. We pave as many miles as we can by virtue of the dollars that we're limited to through our MFT program, the motor fuel tax fund, and then general fund dollars that we're able to include in that. We do have some street reconstructions that are starting to come due. And in the CEB letter, if you read that, you'd see that we're getting a little concerned that we're not, that a lot of street reconstructions are going to come forward rather than street resurfacing. Street reconstruction is much more expensive than resurfacing. We try to resurface annually so that we don't have to reconstruct, but eventually it does come to a point where we need to reconstruct. Then we have alley rehabs in there as well. And this is a program. On the next slide, you see that we have a couple laid out for 2025 in that northwest Elmhurst area. And then future projects on the right, I do caution everybody that those years are approximate, and they do, it's always subject to funding, particularly from the grant side and from the general fund side. So those dates could vary, but just to give everybody an idea where we're at with some of those projects. Next, the sidewalk program. That was, it's two parts to that. We have the, we still continue the sidewalk repair cost sharing program and the ADA transition evaluation that we have going on. But new to it this year is sidewalk construction on one side of the street where no sidewalks exist. As the council will remember, that was a target completion of 40 years, a total of about $13.6 million in improvements. And next year, we have 3.1 targeted for new sidewalk installation. We're trying to balance that all with the other capital projects that we have prioritized. And so we look forward to bringing that forward in the operating budget. Next slide shows some of the bike and pedestrian improvements. Council's obviously familiar with the Rady 3 pedestrian bridge, which we just voted, you just approved a number of agenda items for, so that'll be moving forward. And then we have other improvements planned in the CEB from 2026 until 2030. That was part of the long-term bicycle and pedestrian route improvements. Ms. Moretti commented on those earlier, and we have the Walk and Rollers Group who is helping us with recommendations for that. Another aspect of the capital expenditure budget are stormwater projects. We have a couple that, smaller ones that are coming up in 2026, one larger one that is in the North Grawy Woods area. And then in 2027, the Spring and Agleston project, where we have some federal dollars waiting for us. Another constant in that is the first one on the table, storm station improvements. Those are the stations along Salt Creek on the, I call it the dry side of the levee that we have to maintain because without those, we have bigger stormwater problems in the neighborhoods. So those are coming due where we need to rebuild some of the storm stations, which can get a little expensive. Next up is the police station. This is a replacement of the building on the current site. We, it was $48 million project, including relocation and design and engineering. We just met with four of the architects and engineers. As part of the RFQ process, we received 10 firms that submitted qualifications. There was a staff team that scored them, and we interviewed the top four last week. And so we'll be going back to them to let them know the status, and then getting a proposal from the top firm that we'll bring to the Public Works Committee for consideration in the near future. The next project is Phase 3 of the Public Works Garage. This is a $10.4 million improvement that will expand the garage and the outdoor storage of materials to the south of the Public Works Garage. This, however, does not have a funding source for the GO bonds that we would need to take out. However, the, the extension of the phosphorus requirement may allow us to continue to store some of those materials where they are now at the north end of the wastewater treatment plant. We're looking into that. And so we might be able to push this project out a little further to be able to identify a revenue source to pay for those bonds. Other facility projects include some minor repairs here at City Hall. If you recall, as part of the police station discussion, we looked at whether or not we would remain here as City Hall, at least for the near term, the decision was we would remain here. And so there are some improvements that we need to make. We had to make some elevator improvements this year, some carpet repairs. Other improvements include, fire station number one needs a roof replacement. We've done some tuck pointing there as a result of some water damage that we had, and so we know that a new roof needs to be, or a roof needs to be replaced there. We were fortunate that we received, or we will be receiving, a state grant for the fire training tower of about $950,000 from Senator Glowiak and Representative Deuter. We do intend to move forward with that this year. The Public Affairs and Safety Committee had an initial conversation about that, and we anticipate a balance of $155,000 to be into the next calendar year to pay for that, but it's all grant-funded. And then finally, the salt shed down at the Public Works Garage needs to be replaced, so that is included as well. Do you have a question, Alderman Nardini?
Thank you. No. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So with respect to the training tower, most are other CEBs when there's federal grants. That's included in the CEB itself.
It is.
Well, it's, this CEB does not have the grant part of it, just has the 155.
This is, this is the long-term planning. So Director Coyle, the balance of the entirety of the project, the $950,000, is in the CEB, unless you're going to correct me on that. But what I'm highlighting is the next year balance that would be in there. So it's in 2025.
So I just don't see it in the CEB, so we can take that offline, but I don't see, I don't see the $900,000 and change in the CEB anywhere.
So it would have been in last year's CEB, but because it was moved into the operating for 2025.
So this project was split into two years in the CEB. So the first year, which was the 2025 budget year, was the majority of the funding for the project. The second, the sec-
$155,000 was kind of the last portion. It was mainly burn crops, so that's why it was, it was split into two segments. So that's why you only see the 155 in this year's CEB because the remainder of it was in 2025, which falls off, falls out of this CEB. It's in the 2025 budget.
So can I just follow? So if I'm understanding this correctly, we expected to get the containers in place this year, which will be in this year's, you know, budget.
Yep. So we expect to start the project this year. And so if there's any balance that we are not able to complete this year, it'll be handled as a budget carryover this year into next year as part of that carryover process that we do to finalize.
Understood. Thank you.
Very good. City Manager.
Thank you. The next slide highlights the TIF increment financing, or excuse me, tax increment financing, or TIF, projects which we have. In the downtown TIF, we have the metro station, we have Robert Palmer Drive resurfacing, and some parking deck improvements. In the North York TIF, we have the North York sidewalk improvements. And in the Church Lake Street TIF, we do not have any major projects that are planned at this time. And so finally, the debt that we, that we issue for this, of the $309.2 million in projects, $98.1 million will be funded by future debt through general obligation bonds. We have the police station, which is $48 million, and the funding was recommended by Finance Committee and approved by City Council. The metro station would require $12.2 million of debt funded by future downtown TIF increment. And then, as I said earlier, the Public Works Garage, Phase 3, the $10 million is currently unfunded, and we would need to identify that prior to moving forward with that project. And then at the bottom, we have the I E P A loans, which for Bundle 6 would be $20 million, and then $7.8 million for water projects. The next step is that we roll capital from 2026 and 2027 into the two-year operating budget draft. As I said earlier, the Public Works Committee will have a review of projects. The Finance Committee will be reviewing, has reviewed, and will continue to review revenues. We are in the process of looking at the department operating budgets. We had our first meetings today, and they will continue next week and the week after. And then the final compilation of the proposed 2026 operating budget comes to the council in early October. And then we start our Monday night meetings to review that and move forward from there. Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions at this time? And as I should, this is step one, the introduction, so don't, I think we won't have more time to talk about it. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this goes to the, probably the City Manager question. I think we covered most of the Project As from the slides. The only one I'm seeing we didn't cover that's in my ward that I've, you know, been highly concerned about for a long time, as well as Alderman Brennan, is number 33, the Riverside Route 83 bulb, what we call the bulb. That's a Priority A with a $4.3 million. Is there a reason why we haven't called that one out in the slides, or since we covered pretty much all the other As?
As, as I recall, the majority of the construction for that is scheduled for 2028. And so I think I just tried to highlight projects for the next year or two. So that's three years out.
Fair enough. All right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Alderman Bram, then Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought I saw on the slide something about the Prairie Path Reconstruction. Was that, did I see that on one of the slides?
Was it Prairie Path Lane?
Oh, yeah. Was it Prairie Path Lane?
You know.
York Street- Was it Prairie Path Lane? York Street Prairie Path Improvement. So is that the intersection?
Oh, that's the intersection at York, where the Prairie Path crosses York Street. So it's not necessarily a Prairie Path improvement, but a safety improvement for cyclists and pedestrians.
Thank you.
Alderman Nardini?
Thank you. Nothing.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you for telling us you have nothing. All right. Anyone else? All right. We're on to other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Schenko. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you.